Good evening. Welcome to the April meeting of the Greenwich Representative Town Meeting. My name is Tom Byrne, RTM moderator. This meeting will now come to order. As everyone has received a call for the meeting tonight, the reading of the call will be omitted. Will everyone please join me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Thank you. As all members have received a copy of the minutes of our March meeting, the reading of those minutes will be omitted. Are there any proposed changes to those minutes? Hearing none, the minutes as proposed stand adopted upon unanimous consent. I notified the district and committee chairs yesterday that I intended to propose the following organization of our call tonight. I will shortly place items one, two, and five through nine on our consent calendar. Items 10 and 11, I recommend be taken up as combined items, and then we would take up separately items three and four. So pursuant to our rules, at this time, I will designate the following seven items for our consent calendar. I'm sorry. Before we get into this, is Select Woman Lauren Raven with us? I would like to recognize Select Woman Lauren Raven.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening, Moderator Byrne, Moderator pro tempore vulgaris, members of the RTM and guests. On behalf of the first selectmen, I thank you for this time to be able to publicly acknowledge the decades of dedicated service to our town residents by Nancy Brown. Nancy's community service dates back to when her three sons were in school with her involvement with the PTA. She worked with the Board of Family Centers and helped to found the Urban League of Southwestern Fairfield County, and she was elected to the Representative Town Meeting in 1971. In 1978, Nancy became the Town's Director of Community Development, the first Black woman to head a town department, and she held that position for nearly 30 years. After her retirement, Nancy continued her work volunteering for various causes, including helping young girls of color with opportunities throughout the Women and Girls Advisory Council. Nancy touched everyone she met, especially with her smile, that clear indication of how open her heart was and the compassion she had for others. Our town is a much better community thanks in large part to the enthusiastic work and commitment of Nancy Brown. We thank her family for so generously sharing her with us for all these years and extend our heartfelt condolences on her passing. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Will the members please join me in a moment of silence in memory of Nancy Brown? Thank you. Before I get into the call, I do want to set the stage. Tonight, we are coming to you live from the Town Hall Meeting Room. I want to thank our Assistant Town Clerk, Kimberly Spizano, who is with us tonight, making everything run and organizing all of our votes and minutes and record keeping. We have our technical experts Jenny Larkin and Craig Jones with us, who are keeping the Zoom meeting running smoothly. And so I thank all three of them for the wonderful work that they've done in this past year. This being our one-year anniversary on Zoom. Our regular April meeting of 2020 was our first official Zoom meeting. And I know some of us are happy to be where we are now, emerging from Zoom land. Also, also here in the Town Hall Meeting Room is Moderator pro tem Alexis Vulgaris, and we have a number of district and committee representatives, committee chairs, and district tabulators and chairs. So we'll start with Michael Spilow, Chair of our Public Works Committee. Lucia Jansen is here, Chair of BOC. Kimberly Blank, Chair of Education. Michael Basham, Chair of Finance. Kimberly Talib, Chair of Transportation. We have Catherine Le Balbo, Chair of Parks and Recreation. Molly Salibi, you are the District Eight Tabulator? And we have Jude Collins, who is the District Ten Tabulator. So welcome. Thank you for joining us. It is just so much more pleasant to have people with us as we go through the meeting. So, welcome to all. Back to the call. So I was at the point of designating seven items for our consent calendar pursuant to our rules. If those items remain on the consent calendar without objection, the only thing you will hear on them tonight is what I am about to say. There will be no committee reports and no discussion on them. First item is item number one. This is a resolution changing the date of our September meetings, pushing everything back. Committee and district meetings would be during the week of September 20, and the full RTM meeting would be September 27. Item number two is a resolution approving the sum of $231,610 for overtime services in the Fire Department. Item five is the appointment of Klaus Yonder to be an alternate member of the Inland Wetlands and Watercourses One Word Agency for a term expiring October 31, 2023. Item six is a resolution appointing Susan Warner to be a regular member of the Board of Human Services for a term beginning on July 1, 2021 and expiring June 30, 2024. Unless otherwise stated, if it doesn't, if our resolution does not set a beginning date, the appointment is effective upon approval. Item seven is the appointment of Cornelia Beth Forbes to be a regular member of the Harbor Management Commission for a term beginning upon appointment and expiring March 31, 2023. Item eight is the appointment of Jefferson Parker to be a regular member of the Harbor Management Commission with a term expiring March 31, 2024. And the last of the consent calendar items is a resolution appointing Friedolf Hansen to be an alternate member of the Harbor Management Commission with a term expiring March 31, 2023. Is there any objection to the designation of those seven items on our consent calendar? Hearing none, will the district chairs please mark your voting cards? Consent calendar items one, two, and five through nine, and proceed to poll your delegation. And we are going to wait five minutes for this. All right, so we will be back in five minutes. All right, that's the five-minute period. Hopefully, we're well on our way to completing the vote on the consent calendar items. We will continue, however. The combined calendar items are up next. Those are items 10 and 11. Michael Mason, Chair of the BET, has joined us. I do want to thank Kip Bergweger, Chair of Legislative and Rules, who had agreed to present those, but Mr. Mason was able to join us, so I will call on Michael Mason, Chair of the BET.
Good evening, Mr. Moderator. Well, members of the RTM. On behalf of the BET, I would like to offer an amended motion, amended resolution to item 10 and 11 on your call. These items will appear as they are on your call with the following modification. Resolve that the sum of $2,055,000 be here in the same appropriated from bond proceeds to account 680-1089-59560, project to be determined for costs associated with the ceiling collapse at North Mianas School. And that's on behalf of the Board of Estimate and Taxation.
All right, and so that amount was confirmed in both 10 and 11, 11 being the bond resolution.
Yes, both numbers should be the same in both item 10 and 11.
All right, thank you. Will a member please move the adoption of the substitute resolutions on item 10 and 11?
Moved.
Substitute resolutions on 10 and 11 have been moved and seconded. Did you want to say something? What, all right, Catherine Le Balbo is rising for a point of order. Please state your point of order.
Sorry, I see on the call here this was put up by the Board of Ed. Is the BET allowed to substitute a resolution put on by the Board of Education?
Yes, the Charter, the Charter sets up a system of checks and balances whereby the RTM is the final approval authority for any appropriations in town, either interim or for the full fiscal year. And there is a limit on that approval authority. The RTM can only approve what has been previously approved by the BET. The RTM cannot raise the amount approved by the BET. It can reduce it or it can reject it entirely. If, if the Board of Ed had presented what is on our call, the moderator would not have been able to accept it. It is not in legal order because we do not have the authority to appropriate $8 million, given what the BET did and given the provisions of Section 23 of the Charter. So. All right. So items 10 and 11 have been combined. You know, I think I neglected to actually suspend the rules to combine these items, so why don't I do that? Is there a motion to suspend the rules to combine items 10 and 11 for voting purposes? It has been moved and seconded to suspend the rules to combine items 10 and 11 for voting purposes. Motion to suspend the rules requires a two-thirds majority and is not itself debatable. All those in favor, so I will ask, is there any objection to combining items 10 and 11 for voting purposes? If you have an objection, please contact, if you are an attendee, contact your district representative.
I have a request from 10 to limit two minutes per speaker per issue.
We're not there yet. All right, so the motion to suspend the rules has been adopted upon unanimous consent. We will hear the reports of the committees that considered this, beginning with Kimberly Blank, Chair of our Education Committee.
Thank you. When we considered items 10 and 11, the amount of the request was 8.1 million for costs associated with the ceiling collapse at North Mianas School. We had presentations and question and answer on this item jointly with the Finance Committee. Dr. Tony Jones, Peter Bernstein, Sean O'Keefe, and Dan Watson from the Board of Ed presented this item to us. We also heard from Mike Mason and Leslie Moriarty of the BET. Although the amount of the request approved by the BET is now significantly lower, I believe our discussion on this item is still germane. On Saturday, February 13th, a plaster ceiling collapsed on the upper level of North Mianas School. This caused a sprinkler line to burst, bringing down the hung ceiling below it and causing a large flood. This request is for funds associated with the repair of the damaged areas and remediation of other areas of the building with similar construction that are deemed at risk. Sean O'Keefe and Dan Watson from the Board of Ed explained that the $8.1 million request was based on very preliminary estimates and included a relatively large 20% contingency. North Mianas students who had to relocate are currently using rooms at three other elementary schools. They don't expect them to return until at earliest January of 2022, and will need to rent other space for them while work is being done next year. Of the 8.1 million, they estimate that insurance will reimburse 1.2 million. The relatively low percentage of reimbursement is because the majority of the work is for preventative work, which is not covered. We asked the presenters about the timing and scope of this request. The Board of Ed said that they are coming to us with this request now, before they've done further design work, because our May meeting is devoted to the budget, and they didn't want to have to wait until the June meeting to have financing in place. We were told that the master facilities plan has North Mianas scheduled for renovation in 2032. They haven't begun to consider the scope of that renovation, and they don't know whether work that is being done now will be demolished in the future. We asked whether they would be doing any upgrades to the building, such as improving ADA compliance as part of this work. They said that their priority is getting students back into the building as quickly as possible, and they are not looking to accelerate other improvements as part of this work. In response to a question about the availability of state funds, the Board of Ed said they hadn't yet looked into this. Ms. Moriarty of the BET explained that applying for state grants could delay the timing of the project significantly. We had a lot of discussion about the scope and timing of the project. While everyone agreed that we need to support the work proposed by the Board of Ed, people expressed several concerns with this request. Some felt that it wasn't far enough along in the planning to make such a large request. They felt that a smaller request would give the Board of Ed funds to develop concrete plans and return to the RTM in June. Some felt that the Board of Ed was correct to prioritize getting students back into the building as quickly as possible, especially given the difficulties of COVID over the past year. They don't believe there are necessarily economies in expanding the project's scope and feel we should stick with the timing of the master facilities plan. Others wondered if the Board of Ed could find an opportunity in this crisis and use the dislocation to do more work on North Mianas, particularly regarding ADA compliance or more full-scale renovation as is planned for 2032. Some felt that there could be a bit of a balance of the two, with the Board of Ed being thoughtful about identifying key additional improvements to accomplish during the construction. Some also felt that we should be investigating the availability of state funds and that there should be a building committee to oversee such a large financial expenditure. We considered a motion to amend this item to reduce it by $1 million to $7.1 million, and that motion passed by a vote of 7-5-0. Districts 2, 3, 4, 7, 9, 11, and 12 in favor, districts 1, 5, 6, 8, and 10 against. Those voting in favor said that while they support funding to keep this project moving forward, they believe that there are still too many unknowns. They hope that by reducing the amount, we ensure that the Board of Ed will come back to us for additional funds that will enable us to better consider their design. They hope that the Board of Ed will perhaps take into account some of the concerns raised by the committee, and will be able to address those then. Those opposed to this amendment would have passed the appropriation at the full amount, and we then voted on item 10 as amended. It passed with a vote of 12-0-0. On item 11, we did not consider a motion to reduce the amount of this item because we expected that the BET would adjust this amount as needed. Item 11 passed 12-0-0.
Thank you. Before calling on our next committee report, I do have the result of the vote on the consent calendar items. Those were items one, two, and five through nine. Those in favor, 209 opposed, one abstaining, zero, the consent calendar items have carried. So remember, our September meeting is now September 27, and committee and districts would be that prior week. Our next report is from Michael Basham, Chair of the Finance Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. We did meet jointly with Finance Committee, and Kim did a good job of summarizing the comments that were made by both BET, the BOE, and various school officials at that meeting. We resumed our own meeting after about a 45-minute joint meeting, and during that meeting, we had, obviously, in the joint meeting, we had covered quite a bit of the territory already. One of the concerns that was raised again is that members reiterated their concern that the prior BEC consulting facility, excuse me, studies were supposed to indicate priorities and potential issues in school buildings. And the issue with North Mianas and historic building, in many respects, had not been identified as a potential problem. Andy Doos, a BET member, was present and stated that the BOE facility's master plan was not an engineering study that would necessarily have uncovered the North Mianas problem. He also wanted to mention that in addition to the interim being requested, there would probably be a second interim at some point in the very near future. I noted that the town had dodged a significant bullet and that none of the children or staff were in the classroom, and subjects were not injured. Fortunately, it was empty, and we all agreed as a committee that it was incumbent upon the BET, the RTM, and the BOE to make sure that this kind of event doesn't happen at any of our school buildings in the future. We then proceeded to vote on both items 10 and 11 combined, and the vote was as presented to us. The vote was 12-0-0.
Thank you. Michael Spilow, Chair of our Public Works Committee.
Okay. Good evening. Public Works met with Superintendent Jones, Mr. O'Keefe, Mr. Watson from the Greenwich Public Schools, and Mr. Bernstein from the Board of Ed. As you heard, I won't go over all of those same facts. Members were concerned about the total costs, the high 20% contingency, the lack of plans or even specifics on the work to be done. Members were also concerned about the timeline with estimates extending from December 21 to September 22. Concerns were raised about combining this work with future plans of North Mianas and with about the need for providing the high estimate plus 20% in advance of plans being completed. Greenwich Public School representatives also indicated that an additional appropriation would be needed for temporary classrooms while the work was being done, which raised further concerns regarding why this, the main appropriation, was not combined with, combining the construction costs with the temporary classrooms and only appropriating engineering costs at this time. Several members felt that these concerns were not material, and we should do everything possible to get the kids back in the school at the earliest possible date. Having heard all the concerns, one member raised the possibility of amending the item to reduce the amount, but this issue was raised after the vote had commenced, and thus we did not take up discussion of an amendment. The final vote was 7-5-0 on the item, as it appears on the call, with districts 1, 2, 4, 7, 11 voting no. Can I give the report on the bonding as well? So we discussed the bonding issue and heard the bonding would be reduced by the insurance amount and that the actual bonding could vary once the project costs were better known. We voted 9-2-1 on the bonding item. Those voting no felt the amount was too high and needed to be finalized before we approve it, and the abstention wanted additional information before voting. Thank you.
Thank you. I will remind our members that pursuant to our charter, a bonding resolution must be approved by a majority of the RTM membership, which is 116 members. And Lucia Jansen, Chair of our Budget Overview Committee, would like to report on these items as well.
Good evening. The Budget Overview Committee voted unanimously to take up the item. The BOC meeting took place on April 1st, which was nine weeks after the February 13 ceiling collapse, and preceded both the BET and other RTM committees that were assigned the interim item. Peter Bernstein, Board of Ed Chair, Dr. Tony Jones, Superintendent Sean O'Keefe, Chief Operating Officer, and Dan Watson, Director of Facilities, attended our, attended our meeting to address the BOC's question. The BOC was looking to receive updated information from what the Board of Ed had submitted in the RTM explanatory comments. There seemed to be a wide discrepancy between what was described in the press reports and the RTM Explanos as it relates to the project's scope, tie line, and cost. Sean O'Keefe gave a brief recap of the issues and costs surrounding the North Mianas ceiling collapse. Mr. O'Keefe confirmed the intent of the construction project is limited to three areas: the ceiling collapse, other preventative ceiling areas, and bringing the building up to code and other areas outside of the ceiling, and to address some ADA issues located in the construction area. Peter Bernstein was asked about the construction period indicated in the Explanos from February to June and an expected return date of September for the displaced students. Mr. Bernstein reaffirmed a September move-in date. However, Dan Watson, the Facilities Director, disputed the September date and confirmed that the project duration will be at least six to eight months, if not longer, which was likely to be in January or later. Dan indicated the cost amount for construction in the Explanos is not based on design documents, but rather on ballpark estimate that is roughly calculated by using the square footage by an industry standard cost amount, which for a school building in the Northeast is $312 a square foot. Thus, the Explanos show a cost for the collapsed ceiling area at $39 a square foot at a total construction cost of approximately $633,000, since that is what is known exactly for the remediation. The unknown preventative area is using a 312-square-foot cost at roughly the same square feet for a total of $5 million. The Town's Director of Risk Management also, we asked about the insurance reimbursement and why it was so low at $1 million. And Peter Bernstein confirmed that the insurance only covers the damaged areas. Then the committee, the BOC, was interested, given this unexpected situation, that there was an opportunity to incorporate other areas identified for improvement outlined in the KGND report, as well as possible other ADA issues. However, the school leadership emphasized that there would be nothing from either one of those areas included in this project. The BOC then learned from Dr. Jones, with the change in the timeline for the completion of the construction project, that there is a new identified need for a separate leased building for the displaced students to consolidate to one location needing 18 classrooms. Dr. Jones was asked if she was considering modulars. She responded that she did not consider this a viable alternative for the housing of those displaced students. Dr. Jones stated she has narrowed to a short list of two locations for the leased building and is in legal review evaluating the leases. The $307,000 busing costs in the Explanos are also not reflecting the new extended project that is longer. It was confirmed, the, there was no interest to consider the replacement of the gym roof at this time. A new HVA system had been installed a few years ago, and that will not be replaced. Peter Bernstein indicated that, given the urgency to address the ceiling repair, that the interim funding was needed and could not wait to be incorporated in the fiscal year 22 budget. Mr. Mason spoke briefly to the bond issue, saying that decisions about the amount and timing of the bonding were still fluid and that this provided authorization for bonding when everything was finalized. There was mention that it was the RTM that was the constraint, given that the June meeting would be too late to receive approval to address the remedial construction. Based on the meeting discussion, it was obvious only 25% of construction costs are all that is known, which is the collapsed ceiling portion. Since there are no designed documents, the preventative ceiling costs and timeline are unknown. Further, there is no timeline at this point without those design documents. Given the ambiguity of the information, the BOC's question on scope, timeline, and costs were not able to be answered, and we decided to not vote on the item. And we were eager to learn what information would be learned at the later BET and RTM meeting subsequent to the BOC meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. That now brings us to discussion on items 10 and 11. I will indicate a member of District 10 had communicated through Jude Collins, the District Tabulator, of a desire to make a motion to limit debate, but upon learning, we only had seven speakers signed up, elected not to pursue that. So our first speaker will be James Waters, to be followed by Bob May. And we're wondering, we see, was it Victoria? Victoria Waters? Is that James Waters? You can unmute yourself and speak. James Waters. No. All right, Bob May, to be followed by Ryan Fazio.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator and fellow RTM members. While I serve as Chair of District 12, I'm speaking as an individual tonight. My purpose in speaking is to relay the concerns and expectations expressed by the North Mianas parents attending, excuse me, and speaking at our April 8 district meeting. What do they want? To house all students in a single temporary facility as soon as possible and to repair North Mianas and return the children to their neighborhood school without unnecessarily, unnecessary delay. As to expectations, they expect all branches of town government to cooperate, working together to expedite the repairs and reopening of North Mianas. The Board of Education and School Administration need to define the scope of the project, develop plans so an RFP can be sent out, and proceed to sign contracts as expeditiously as possible. The Board of Estimate and Taxation and RTM need to react to proper funding requests, calling special meetings when necessary to ensure that the work on the project is not delayed. delayed. North Myanis School, along with the International School at Dundee, are at the heart of this community, and a fully operational North Myanis School must be returned to the community without delay. I urge you to approve the appropriation and bonding resolutions before us this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Ryan Fazio, to be followed by Josh Brown.
Good evening. As a member of District 12, I would also like to relay the concerns and sense some urgency that we on District 12 have heard from North Myanis families over the last several weeks. I also appreciate, in my discussions with members of the RTM leadership, BET, the BOE, Town Hall, and other parts of town government, the understanding that they have of the sense of urgency within the North Myanis community, that this rebuild is conducted expeditiously and effectively and safely so all students can get back into school on the same site as soon as possible. To that end, I would also like to recommend that the BET and RTM consider scheduling a special meeting between May 19th and June 1st, when the superintendent laid out that the BOE will open bids from contractors to rebuild the school and June 1st being the date at which such a contract would take effect, so that we can move forward with the reconstruction as quickly as possible. And I also hope that the town will conduct an investigation and review of how this facility was allowed to fail in a catastrophic matter and manner and the problems were not identified over 20 years since the ceilings were reconstructed. So I appreciate everyone's work on this matter and hope that there can be coordination across town government so it's resolved effectively and as soon as possible. Thank you.
Josh Brown, to be followed by Mary Flynn.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Moderator. Please vote in favor of this item. This is lacking a lot of the information that I think a number of the committees have already spoken about. Getting better information is going to be important, so please vote in favor. Thank you.
Thank you. Mary Flynn, to be followed by Ed Dodekis.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I am speaking in support of this money to fix the North Myanis School, but this is horrific. We have let our schools deteriorate to the point where a very heavy ceiling collapsed. This does not happen. Had school been in session, we would have lost an entire fourth grade class and their teacher. It takes my breath away. We would have been front page news worldwide. Our schools have obviously deteriorated to a dangerous level, and this BET will not properly fund them. They say they will, but we know it will cost more than this, and we know this reduction of almost 75% of the amount requested will probably delay the project. Plus, they'll have 230 of us meet in an emergency session so they can go through the process instead of approving it now to prove a point. They say this will, they say they will approve money for schools, yes, yet they reduce the amount requested for an overdue Julian Curtis upgrade by over 70%. They said they would fund a fire station for the back country should this, our third study, again determine the need is there. They studied response times while traffic was greatly reduced due to COVID last spring and still determined that response times do not provide coverage for all. Yet there's no money in the budget for back country fire coverage. Is this fiscal responsibility? We need to bond for these school repairs, including a new central middle school and for fire coverage, and we need to do it now while rates are low. It's a disgrace. We're Greenwich, Connecticut. We can fix this. Move the timelines up, keep our children safe. Nobody wants higher property taxes, but this is our town and we must do better. This funding system, determined by an elected but unpaid BET, is not working. Half of our BET is not listening to us, and they're playing games with our rainy day fund. Please pass this inadequate funding request and please demand more of our BET and our town. Thank you.
Our next speaker is James Waters, to be followed by Ed Dodekis.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Hold on one moment, please. We have a point of order. Kimberly Blank, what is your point of order? That's not a point of order. All right. Mr. Waters, to be followed by Ed Dodekis.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, and good evening. My name is James Waters, and I'm a parent of two students at North Myanis School. The North Myanis School community spoke clearly last week. 333 people, representing 80% of the school's families, signed a letter urging town government to act urgently to repair and reopen the North Myanis School building. As the superintendent has clearly stated, there is a timing crunch, and we can't afford to lose even a single week if we want to get the building repaired and reopened sometime this fall. The Board of Ed has unanimously agreed with the scope of the repair project and reiterated that time is of the essence. I wish the BET had listened to this overwhelming support and clear rationale for the full interim appropriation requested from the Board of Ed. Since they didn't, and some delays are now likely, the RTM is left with the decision to either do your best to minimize delays or to exacerbate them. I hope you'll do the former and not the latter. Please help us minimize any delays and get North Myanis reopened as quickly as possible. I understand that the moderator of the RTM has offered to hold a special meeting as needed in order to move this process along. I'd like to thank him for this and hope you'll all support the North Myanis community in ensuring we get this done as quickly as we can. Thank you.
I do want to come back to the point of order raised by Kimberly Blank. I had not been listening carefully. We are, she is correct that the items before us currently for debate are items 10 and 11. I did not hear mention of a Northwest Fire Station, but you are correct that we are addressing items 10 and 11 only. Thank you. Ed Dodekis, to be followed by Peter Bernstein.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, members of the town meeting. I fully support the total and complete repair of North Myanis School and will vote for this appropriation tonight. I will also support the additional appropriations expected to come before us in the coming weeks. The BET has structured this funding correctly. It encourages a collaborative and transparent approach during difficult times. An approach whereby funds are appropriated with no clear information on actual costs is simply not fiscally responsible. And I am not comfortable bypassing RTM input by vesting full funding authority in the BET with a condition that they, and they alone, decide upon. And let me add my thanks to our moderator, who has assured everyone involved that special RTM meetings will happen if needed, which will allow this project to move forward quickly. If this project is delayed, it will not be because of funding. So let's move this project forward now. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Peter Bernstein, Chair of the Board of Education.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. So the Board of Education unanimously voted for a request for the full funding. We did not have an opportunity to take up what the, what the BET did. We were thinking, our thinking at the time is to get the kids back in school as soon as it's safely possible. The scope of the project is actually quite simple, to restore to where we were and ensure that those places are up to code. Now, it's my job to be optimistic, and I want those kids to return to the school as humanly possible as we can. Our staff, obviously, is being a little more realistic about it, knowing what it's going to take to get the, the construction work done. And a lot of people have talked about the insurance, so just to be clear, if there's any confusion, the insurance will actually cover the damaged areas in the, in that classroom where the ceiling came down and the pipe broke, as well as other areas damaged as a result of the water flowing through the building. So, so it's actually a little more than was stated before, just want to make sure that's clear. The RFP is slated to go out next week. They're making good progress on the planning, so that should be ready to go. And you all received, hopefully, the, the document from the superintendent laying out the process. We are not able to sign a contract until the full funding is in place. So it, you know, I will work with the, the Chair of the BET and work with the moderator, and we will try to figure out how to schedule our meetings in, in the right order so that we can move on this as quickly as possible. To the point of conditions, though, every year, the BET, as part of its regular budget process, conditions capital projects. There are nine capital projects in the budget that's coming due next month that are conditioned projects that are not fully formed. And, and I don't ever hear anybody say they're not going to vote for those, so it'll be interesting to hear your discussion next month, because I think something may be changed in town. But we'll be back, obviously, as soon as possible for, for the full repair cost. We'll be back for the, for the planning of placing our students elsewhere while the work is undergoing. I'd ask that you please support items 10 and 11 at this time and support us when we come back. Thank you.
All right, so that is.
Mr. Moderator. Kip Bergweger. Legislative Rules took up item 11.
All right. I apologize. Mr. Bergweger, would you like to give that report now?
Well, it's very brief. We were helped by Peter Bernstein, Dan Watson, Sean O'Keefe, and we also had Beth Crummick and Karen Fosiliadis from the BET. Everything that you, all the things that we covered have already been mentioned. So our vote on item 11, legal order was 11-0-0, and the merits was 11-0-0. District 10 was not available for that vote.
All right. Molly Salibi, you are recognized.
Hi, Molly Salibi. I urge everyone to vote for the $205,000 million, since that's all that is in front of us tonight. I am, D8 and D12, North Myanis families live in both of those districts. I happen to be a North Myanis alum, along with eight other family members. And if you haven't been part of the North Myanis community, you really don't know how special it is. I've spent the last two weeks educating new neighbors on town government, people who just bought houses here in the last six to nine months and have children at North Myanis. Some of those children are displaced and some are not, and they don't understand the process. So they have a much higher awareness of the RTM than they didn't two weeks ago, and they're really looking to us. And I gave them my word that we, as a body, would be ready to meet outside of any special, outside of any regular meeting at a moment's notice. So, thank you. Thank you.
Will the district chairs please mark your voting cards? Combined items 10 and 11. Again, item 11, in order to approve a bonding resolution, must be approved by 100, at least 116 members. We will await five minutes before proceeding with our final two items.
We are at the end of the five-minute voting period. We are ready to move on to the first of the separate items, and that is item number three. Paul DeBarry, Chair of the Board of Ethics.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator and members of the RTM. On behalf of the Board of Ethics, I'm pleased to introduce item three, an amendment to the Code of Ethics, resolved at section 2-9 of Chapter Two Administration. Article Two, Code of Ethics of the Code of Ordinances of the Town of Greenwich is amended as follows. The item is as it appears on the call.
Thank you. Will a member please move the adoption of the resolution? Resolution on item three has been moved and seconded. May we hear the reports of the committees that considered this, beginning with Kip Bergweger, Chair of our Legislative and Rules Committee?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Mr. DeBarry presented this item to the Legislative Rules Committee at our meeting on Monday, April 5. We were also helped by Ahmad, the Assistant Town Attorney. This is a resolution to amend the Code of Ethics to update provisions addressing town officers who have a substantial financial interest in one or more transactions with the town. The Code of Ethics defines a substantial financial interest as any financial interest which is more than nominal and not common to the interest of other town citizens. The section of the Code being amended sets forth the requirements for reporting a substantial financial interest. Since 1965, the threshold for town officers having to report a financial interest has been $100. This amendment would make two changes in the amount. First, it increases the amount to $200. Second, it would give the board the authority to change the amount from time to time. It would also give the board the authority to change the threshold for an insubstantial financial interest. The amendment also modernizes the method of submitting reports by allowing both filing with the town clerk and introducing the use of an electronic system to be supervised by the Board of Ethics. The Legislative Rules Committee discussed amending this resolution in several ways. In the first paragraph, the word "his" appears in two places. This gave rise to a discussion on the use of gender-neutral words. L and R voted to replace the word "his" with the word "said" in both places. Attorney Ahmad volunteered to review the remaining parts of the Code of Ethics, and at the second reading, to recommend any other language changes to make the code gender-neutral. L and R gratefully invited Attorney Ahmad to undertake her review. We then had a debate on several items. One was the reporting the amount and whether it should be $500 instead of $200, and the use of the word substantial and insubstantial and what their meanings might be, and whether the board should have the authority to change the reporting amount and the amount of an insubstantial financial interest. Legislative Rules further voted to amend the resolution by deleting the words or such other threshold amount as may be established by the Board of Ethics from time to time in the first paragraph and to delete the third paragraph in its entirety. The votes to make these amendments were 12-0-0, and the votes on legal order and the merits as amended were 12-0-0. I do want to add that Mr. DeBarry was very helpful in our discussions, and we appreciated his being there and all the help that he gave us. I'll make the motion to amend at an appropriate time, and I note that Town Services also voted to amend, and if it's appropriate, I could add their amendment to my motion, so we only have to vote on this once.
All right. Let's hear from Town Services, Richard Newman, Chair of Town.
Mr. Moderator. Town Services met on Tuesday, April 6. We also had Paul DeBarry with us, Chairman of the Board of the Ethics Committee and Town Attorney Ahmad. We were aware of the changes that Legislative and Rules has made the previous night. We also found a few other problems with the wording, since the word "fiscal" was removed in the very first line. We added it back to the third line. I did talk to Kip about this. There was, we also understood changing "his" to gender-neutral "said," and we also were concerned with the line item. The W at first was not removed from the very first word of it. Town Services, knowing the amendment of item one by Legislative, or item three by Legislative and Rules, and with ours voted 11-0-0, and we agree that Legislative and Rules should make the changes that we discussed in one motion.
Well, you want to describe your change?
Okay, again, W, the very first.
I thought it was, I see an addition of each fiscal year. Is that your?
Yeah, so the, the very first line where fiscal was removed, we're adding it back in the third line, removing "in the." So it says "or more each fiscal year" instead of "or more in the year.
All right. So I, when I read that, I, I would just like your impression on this. When I read it, it would, if, if we adopted. When I read it, it would, if we adopted your amendment, it would say "any town officer having a substantial financial interest in one or more transaction totaling 200 or more each fiscal year."
Or more each fiscal.
That suggests that it's a repeating thing, each fiscal year. I mean, it could be. I know, I don't think that's what you intended, but I don't know why.
Well, I think that's what it was because, again, the very first line, within 30 days after the end of each fiscal year, it's the very first line that was being removed.
Yeah, but that's not there anymore. I just thought "in the fiscal year" would be clear. Each fiscal year, to me, suggests that this is, that if you don't have something every fiscal year, then you don't have to report. I don't know why, you know, it just seems excessive to me. And we're not going to vote on this finally. Maybe we can hash this out for. All right, so Mr. Bergweger, you want to move that amendment each fiscal year as well?
Kip, you're muted.
Sorry, yes, I would do that. And the first amendment that Mr. Newman is referring to is the very first line. The very first letter was not deleted. It seems there's just a capital W hanging out there.
All right, diversion out of, all right. So it now, it now would start with "any town officer," is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. All right, so we do have a slide with these amendments. You want to, is that slide up for people to, okay. So that is up there. And it is color-coded. I believe the red, the red language, you know, with the strike-throughs and the additions are what Legislative and Rules was adding, and the green is what Town Services is adding. Is that accurate, Mr. Bergweger?
Yes.
All right, any discussion on, so the motion to amend being offered by our Legislative and Rules Committee does not require a second. Any discussion on that motion to amend? Mr. Spilo?
I wasn't, I wasn't clear on whether the Legislative, Legislative and Rules is adopting the land use language as well? Or are those separate amendments?
Land use? Or Town Services?
Town Services.
Yeah, they're proposing that. So is that correct, Mr. Bergweger?
That's correct.
So, so if we were to adopt what is being presented by Mr. Bergweger on behalf of the Legislative and Rules Committee, there would be no further amendments tonight being proposed? Does that answer your question?
And I know also, Mr. Moderator, that your point on whether it should say "the fiscal year" or "each fiscal year," we can deal with that between now and next week, next meeting.
Right.
Second reading.
And I was curious, when I read this, I thought insubstantial was a typo. You're saying that's not a typo? I mean, if something, if something is not a substantial interest, then it would be insubstantial, right? Are we, they're going to define?
It's very curious, it's very curiously worded.
All right, so we can hash this out, I guess. Hopefully, we'll make some further changes because this does not look clear to me. And I'm one of the few people who actually file these things, so. All right, any further questions or discussions on this? All right, is there any objection to this? We can adopt upon unanimous consent without a vote? If there is any objection, please express it now. All right, hearing none. That motion to amend, as presented by Legislative and Rules, which includes the proposal from Town Services, is adopted upon unanimous consent. Further discussion on this item as amended? So, Mr. Barry, have you, you were the only one to sign up. Did you want to say anything further, Mr. Barry?
No, I think, I think most of you know that for the last several years, the board has recommended that an online system be adopted for filing. And I think the recent pandemic has added some impetus to that. We've been working with the Law Department and the Selectmen over the last couple of years and doing a little dance because the board doesn't really feel that it should be proposing legislation. We, our job is to apply it. So we proposed a modest amendment. I think all the changes that have been made, both by the Selectmen and the Law Department and the various committees have been constructive. All I could add is I do think that the change with regard to fiscal year was not intended to be for each fiscal year, which is to clarify that it was in a fiscal year. And with regard to the insubstantial, the intent there, whether it's clear or not, and I'm sure it could be improved. I think the intent there was just simply to show a limit as to whether, you know, when you go from a threshold, a threshold is when you go from insubstantial to substantial. Somebody has to make that decision. And I think that with the idea being that the RTM feels that it's comfortable. I mean, I think the board had proposed making that change simply as an accommodation because it hadn't been changed in, you know, 50 years. And we felt that the board would be happy to sort of, you know, look at the different filings and try to come up with an idea of what was an appropriate level to set the threshold at. But if the, if the RTM is prepared to monitor that, certainly, we have no objection to that.
All right, I will just point out, I'm sorry I missed the Legislative and Rules Committee on this. And as I said, I'm, I'm one of the few who file. And timing, of course, is important. And it was very clear under the current rule that you file on the month of July. Now, I don't really understand when you would be expected to, to file. So we'll talk about that. You know, if you have multiple transactions that occurred, must you file every, every instant at that time? Because it says "as promptly as possible after you become aware of such interest." Or can you wait and file one at the end? So I think it's unclear on that, but we'll talk about that. All right, will the district chairs please mark your, no, we're not voting on this. This is subject to our second read rule. So we will close our discussion on item three. That will come back in June. And we will now move on to item four. I believe the Public Works Commissioner, Amy Seabird, is going to present that item.
Good evening, everyone. I hope you can hear me okay. So thank you. Item four resolve that section 9-5 of chapter nine, Waste and Litter, Article 1, Waste Collection and Disposal of the Code of Ordinances of the Town of Greenwich is amended as follows, and the item is as it appears on the call.
Thank you. Will a member please move the adoption of the resolution? Resolution on item four has been moved and seconded. Michael Basham, Chair of our Finance Committee.
Mr. Moderator, I had signed up to speak on the amendment, the proposed amendment.
Wait a minute, you're giving a committee report now?
Oh.
On item four?
Forgive me, yes. The, we took up this issue in the Finance Committee. As co-chair of the First Eletman's Waste Management Committee, I proposed that we adopt or amend the item. And we agreed to the amendment, 12-0-0, the amendment that will be proposed momentarily. And at the same time, we also took up the issue of the committee decided that they would like to recommend to the RTM that we vote to suspend the rules tonight and vote on this item. We decided it was not controversial. Some members objected to that. Some felt that we have a second read rule, should we, we should honor it. Others thought, to the extent that there was a sense of urgency, they might be, they might consider voting for it tonight as well. The sense of the committee resolution to suspend the rules and vote on the item tonight, what the vote was 8-2-2. Again, the two negative votes. Thought we should adhere to the rules. The two abstentions thought, as long as there was a sense of urgency, they would, could be convinced, excuse me, be convinced to vote on the item.
All right, before I call on our next, for our next committee report, I do have the result of the vote on the combined items. Those are items 10 and 11, the North Myanis School matter. Those in favor, 211. Opposed, 2. Abstaining, 2. Those items have carried. Kip Bergweger, Chair of our Legislative and Rules Committee.
I'm supposed to take that up first.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Amy Seabird, Commissioner of Public Works, presented this item to Legislative and Rules at our April 5 meeting. We were also helped by Ahmad, Assistant Town Attorney, and by Scott Cowd, District 7 Delegate, who was a member both of Legislative Rules and of the Advisory Committee, which had been created as required by the original language of the ordinance. The ordinance dealing with disposal of solid waste contains a sunset clause that would terminate tipping fees paid by licensed waste collectors and the permit fees paid by residents to pay, to personally dispose of solid waste on October 31, 2021. Commissioner Seabird noted that tipping fees have been a success, and it is time to eliminate the sunset provisions as they apply to tipping fees. However, the resident individual permit fee is more complex. The town charges the fee for the fiscal year, but the sunset clause is effective October 31. And it's, it's complicated to sell a permit for just certain number of limited, limited number of months. So the proposal is to retain the sunset clause, but as it applies to the permit fee, but extend it to June 30, 2022. Another change in the ordinance would extend the ordinance to apply not just to solid waste, but to any other material collected at Holly Hill, such as recyclables, food scraps, and yard waste. Several Legislative Rules Committee members objected to this language, and L and R voted to delete this wording. A further change would require a payment of individual permit fee for, quote, "access to the site." There was extensive discussion on whether the town charges for access to Holly Hill. Commissioner Seabird noted there has always been a permit entry fee. You are supposed to have one in order to get into the transit station. But several committee members remarked that no one ever checks their stickers when they come in. And there appears to be an enforcement problem. The District Delegate, District 7 Delegate, who is a member of the Advisory Committee, advised that these are all concerns that are matters being worked on and will still need to be developed. So Legislative and Rules voted on three proposed amendments. The, there's a motion to amend the final paragraph by retaining the first sentence of the final paragraph and changing, and changing it by deleting the words, quote, "second and" and taking the S off the last word paragraph, and to revise the date of the sunset clause to June 30, 2022. That would have the effect of eliminating the tipping fee sunset clause, but extending it for the permit fees. The vote was 11-1-0, with District 9 voting no on the grounds that she did not agree with the sunset provision. Then there was a motion to amend deleting the word "site access" in the third paragraph. Vote on that was 9-1-2. District 3 and 5 abstained, and District 4 voted no. Then there was a motion to amend to delete the words or any other material collected at Holly Hill for disposal in the first sentence of the third paragraph. This was the one that was raised to concern that the ordinance was being extended to recyclables and such. The vote on this was 7-4-1. Four no votes were cast by Districts 7, 8, 9, and 11. On the motion to prove the item as amended, the votes for legal order and on the merits were 12-0-0. On the motion to waive the second reading rule, because we are cutting this too close operationally, the vote was 11-0-1, with District 1 abstaining. And I'll make the motion to amend at the appropriate time.
Thank you. Michael Spilo, Chair of our Public Works Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Excuse me. The, we heard from, on item four, we heard from First Selectman Camillo, Commissioner Seabird, and Attorney Ahmad. We learned that tipping fees substantially reduced waste and increased revenue to the town, but the permit fee still needed consideration. The reason being that while the total municipal solid waste brought by commercial haulers dropped nearly 40% after tipping fees were implemented, self-holage increased. We were told the commercial haulers claim they carted Greenwich waste to lower cost outside from facilities, though it was pointed out that it seemed unlikely that haulers would admit to having previously dumped out of Greenwich waste at Holly Hill. Any event, I won't belabor the points made previously. Cheryl Moss of the Selectmen's Waste Committee offered an amendment which retains the sunset clause only for the permit fee and strikes the word "for site access" from the proposed item on the call. We voted 11-1-0 on this amendment. The no vote wishing to simply do away with the sunset so that the item only came back if changes were actually needed. We then voted on the item as amended, 12-0-0. We also made a motion to recommend suspending the rules so that the RTM can take up the, a vote on the item tonight. The motion to recommend suspending the rules passed 9-3-0, with those noting, voting no, wishing to abide by the second read rule. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Bergweger?
Yes, yes, sir.
Hang on a minute. Lucia Jansen, Chair of our Budget Overview Committee.
Good evening again. Last fiscal year, your Budget Overview Committee had devoted enormous amount of time and analysis to understand the opportunities and potential costs for the town's adoption of new hauler tipping fees to address the $3.7 million financial hole in last fiscal year's 2020 budget. After months of research and investigation, the BOC overwhelmingly voted in favor of implementing tipping fees to address this budget shortfall with a vote of 10-1-1. Most significantly was that many felt tipping fees was long overdue, given that Greenwich was singled out as the only town of 169 in the state without a tipping fee, and significantly noted our adjacent neighbors in both Portchester, New York and Stanford, Connecticut require tipping fees. As an important side note, the BOC had also reviewed in depth the alternative pay-as-you-throw proposal. The BOC voted 0-12-0 to unanimously reject the pay-as-you-throw proposal. As many of you will recall, the sunset provision was added to the waste ordinance in the event the tipping fee failed to deliver on projected financial expectations. At our meeting, the BOC members heard a report from Dan Ozsmer, who is a member of the First Selectmen's Waste Committee, as well as Vice Chair of the BOC. Dan described the tipping fees have been an enormous success with the town meeting its projected financial goals. He described projected revenue of 3.3 million, including tipping fees, additional recycling, reduced municipal solid waste, and new revenue for the issuance of permit fees to enter Holly Hill Transfer Station. Thus, the tipping fee implementation had accomplished its objectives, and the BOC was in favor of removing the sunset provision for the tipping fee. While the committee agreed with removing the sunset language for the tipping ordinance, there was hesitation about the language for the permit fee that was also new, along with the tipping fee. The BOC members discussed that the RTM had made clear that they wanted to keep the resident fees nominal for direct disposal of household waste at Holly Hill. The BOC felt that if the First Selectmen's Waste Committee sought to continue to explore a change in permit fees, that was a separate analysis, and they will have future opportunity to return to the RTM with their proposal. The committee therefore removed the addition of the phase, of the phrase, excuse me, for site access when it came to the permit fee clause. The vote to amend that call item, removing the three words, was 9-0-3. District 5, 6, and 8 abstained. District 6 and 8 abstained because they felt they did not have enough information about the proposed word change. District 6 abstained because the Selectmen's Waste Committee felt District Six abstained because the Selectmen's Waste Committee felt there needed to be changes to the resident permit fee, but was not opposed to those chump, changes coming before the RTM. Then the vote on the call item as amended was taken, and that vote was eleven zero one. District Six abstained. And given that there was such overwhelming support to remove the sunset provision, the BOC felt this item could be completed in one read. So we voted for waiving the second read, and that was unanimous, twelve zero zero. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Bergweger, you want to offer your motion to amend?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. In the, in the third paragraph, which starts with the four words, any town residents, well, we go on, who wish to deliver acceptable solid waste, then delete or any other, or any other material collected at Holly Hill for disposal. Then go down two lines where the line starts, and line has permit fee for site access, delete for site access. And the third paragraph, it says the second and third paragraph, delete the words second and, strike the S off the end of paragraph, change the date, October thirty one, twenty one, twenty twenty one, to June thirty, twenty twenty two, and continue unless sooner extended, insert the words or amended by action of the representative town meeting. That's it.
Are you also deleting that last phrase, starting in addition?
Sorry, which, which last phrase?
I guess the last sentence. In addition, it is recommended.
Oh, yes.
So that.
That comes up.
All right. That being offered on behalf of our Legislative and Rules Committee, it does not require a second discussion on the motion to amend. Now, we did have a sign up list for item four and for the amendment. So I will go to the sign up for the amendment. Mr. Basham.
Mr. Moderator, I will defer to my co-chair, Cheryl Moss, let her make the initial comments.
Cheryl Moss.
Good evening, everyone. As co-chair of the First Selectmen's Waste Management Committee, I fully support the amendment to extend the sunset clause on the permit fee. The First Selectmen's Waste Management Committee has been studying the municipal solid waste issue extensively for the past six months and do not expect to identify any reasonable alternative solutions from, for municipal solid waste disposal that can be introduced in the near future that will not negatively impact our residents. We are working on some promising long-term solutions that we will explain in our final report in September twenty twenty one. Included in this report to the RTM will be a recommendation on permit fees. Given the pandemic and potential distortions and trash trends at Holly Hill, the First Selectmen's Waste Management Committee needs more time to analyze and verify the data prior to determining its final recommendation. We have not yet been able to meet with the auditors of Holly Hill and require feedback to make sure that our final recommendations are practical and easily implemented. In the meantime, for budgeting clarity and operational certainty, we recommend that the sunset clause on the current twenty five dollar permit fee be extended from October twenty twenty one until the end of the fiscal year, June thirtieth, twenty twenty two. I encourage our members to support this amendment, as well as any proposal to waive the second read rule to enable DPW to begin selling next year's permits without delay. Thank you.
Michael Basham.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. What the committee intends to do, let me back up. What we're asking, the amendments are asking people to do is just extend the sunset for the tipping fee from October thirty first to June thirtieth of twenty twenty two. Initially, I was in favor of extending it. I was thinking in terms of December thirty first. It became obvious in discussions with Amy Seibert that it would be difficult for her to issue permits for people that extended only until the end of the year. There would be another process associated with having to reissue those permits. So just to clarify, we, we did incorporate, the Finance Committee did incorporate the amendment proposed by BOC. We did not have the opportunity to incorporate the amendment proposed by the Legislative and Rules Committee. That, that meeting took place the same night. We did not have a subsequent meeting to address that particular change. So I can't speak on behalf of the committee on that issue. I don't anticipate it would have been a problem, but we did not have a special meeting to address it. We will, we did vote to, on the amendment as proposed to us in the committee, we voted twelve zero zero. And as indicated earlier, we did vote eight two two to recommend to the full RTM that they eliminate the, excuse me, suspend the rules and vote on the amendment or on the item as amended tonight. Let me re, I would like to just add that the committee does anticipate being able to come back to the RTM in September with a proposal to address the twenty five dollar permit fee and any proposed changes. And at that time, I would anticipate that we will also propose eliminating the sunset provision of, from June thirtieth, and we're just eliminating it entirely. Our goal is to have something in front of the Board of Selectmen in no later than August so they can get it on the September call for a first read, and hopefully this issue will be resolved in October at the very latest. Thank you.
Mr. Ozzmer.
Thank you. I'll try not to repeat many of the points that have been made. With regard to the tipping program, again, I would just note it has been very successful. There are a few, few things that were not covered. When the debate on tipping was occurring, there were some concerns. One was that Greenwich would lose a lot of their hometown haulers. In fact, there had been no reduction in the amount of haulers serving Greenwich, so that was a concern, and in fact, that did not occur. The second was that there would be an increase, a significant increase in traffic at Holly Hill. And as has been mentioned, the amount of direct drop off did increase by four percent. But, you know, that is really frankly just a little bit of year-to-year noise, so we don't really know that we, we can see a significant trend there. I would also note that the permit fee program was originally supposed to be seventy five dollars. The RTM did reduce it to twenty five. And in fact, the program has been incredibly successful. The town initially expected to sell twenty five hundred permits, and they've sold over seven thousand, almost triple the amount of permits. So in fact, the town, even at the lower price, was able to in fact raise even more revenue, and clearly the residents have been very happy with the program, and that will be something, of course, that this, the Waste Committee will review. But, you know, so far it has been a very significant program. I would, I would note that, as others have said, that the, the BOC amendment, the Finance Amendment, and the LNR amendment are all combined in the, in the LNR. And so I would urge everyone to approve that amendment. And lastly, on the second read, I would note that last May, when we did vote on the second read, the vote was only one fourteen, one oh nine to one, which meant that even before the program started, it was a very even vote in terms of whether or not we really wanted a sunset. Now that we know that the program is so successful, I would urge everyone to eliminate the sunset. And I would note that on the plastic bag ordinance, you know, I believe last month we did eliminate the sunset, and we did do that on a first read, because again, it was in too many people's eyes a very straightforward issue. So I would urge you to waive the second read as well. Thank you.
All right. So that is the total of our signed up speakers. So we can take a vote, a recorded vote on this motion to amend. We can adopt it upon unanimous consent. Is there any objection to the proposed motion to amend offered by Legislative and Rules? If there is a single objection, we will take a vote. I do not. All right. The Legislative and Rules motion to amend item four is adopted upon unanimous consent. Now, there was a separate sign up list for item four. Let me just take a look at that. So everyone, oh, Ryan Fazio, you signed up. Do you want to speak on this? So we now have item four as amended by Legislative and Rules. Mr. Fazio, did you want to speak on this?
Sure, just quickly, I wanted to, thank you, Mr. Moderator. I wanted to commend the RTM and town government on the enormous success of this program from both a fiscal and environmental standpoint, and urge the RTM to not only extend the sunsets, but in the near future, consider eliminating them as well. Thank you.
All right. And Mr. Ozzmer, you spoke on the merits, so I don't think you want to speak further. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. All right. So this is subject to our second read rule. We would need to take up a motion to suspend the rules, which must carry by a two thirds vote. We will take a recorded vote on this. So what, who is making that motion? Mr. Bergweger, were you going to make that?
I thought the Finance was the first one to propose it.
All right. Mr. Basham.
All right. Mr. Basham, on behalf of Finance Committee, has moved that we suspend the rules for the purpose of voting, suspending the second read rule as it applies to item four tonight. If you are in favor of voting on item four tonight and not bringing it back a second time, you vote yes on this motion to suspend the rules. If you want this to come back at our June meeting, you should vote no on the Finance Committee motion to suspend the rules regarding item four. So I ask our district tabulators to please mark your voting cards. Finance Committee motion to suspend the rules to take a final vote on item four tonight and proceed to poll your delegation. We will, we will wait the five minute period, and depending on the result of that vote, we will proceed further.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah. Hang on a minute, hang on a minute. Motion to suspend the rules is not itself debatable, and it requires a two thirds majority to pass. So the question was, do we have discussion on this? And the answer is no, we do not. So please proceed to poll your delegations. Start your clock. We have the result of the vote on the Finance Committee motion to suspend the rules on item four. Those in favor, two oh two, opposed, thirteen, abstaining, zero, that motion to suspend the rules has carried. So we will now take a vote on the merits of item four as amended. We have had full discussion on it, so I will ask the district tabulators to please mark your voting cards, item four as amended, and proceed to poll your delegation. This being the final item to come before us tonight, we will await the resolution of this vote before proceeding to adjourn the meeting. We are waiting on District Nine to report in. We have all the other districts. While we are waiting, let me just mention that our next meeting is our annual budget meeting on May tenth. That meeting will take place at Central Middle School, our trumpet return. We are inviting the first one hundred interested members to join us there. The seating capacity is well over five hundred, so there's plenty of room to spread out. And any, the, the seats are filling up quickly. So if you are interested in joining us in person in May, please contact our moderator pro tem, Alexis Vulgaris. She is creating the, the list of attendees. We do have the result of the vote on item four, the tipping fee ordinance as amended. Those in favor, two oh five, opposed, seven, abstaining, three, that item has carried. That being the final business to come before us tonight, I wish all of you a, a happy spring. Look forward to seeing people at Central Middle School in May. This meeting is now adjourned. Thank you all for coming.